I want to, okay, open the planning board meeting of November 3rd, 2025, and this meeting is being recorded as a Zoom meeting. Roll call. Margaret?
Yeah.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
And Kevin Mello, our alternate?
Yes.
And Lori Ann Miller, yes. And Helio? I don't have Helio in, but he was, he is going to catch in eventually, so we'll, he'll announce when he's here. Okay, the first thing on the agenda is an application for Planning Board Special Permit, PSP-25-3, 676 Dartmouth Street. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Margaret?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Lori Miller, yes. Dan?
Madam Chair, do you want to read the legal ad, or would you like to?
Do we need to read the?
You can ask for, you can ask for a motion to.
Can we have a motion to waive the reading of the legal ad, please?
Moved.
Second.
I have a motion to waive the reading of the legal ad. All in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Lori Ann Miller, yes.
Okay, just before I get started, just so the applicant knows, if Helio doesn't come on, he's going to need all, all four members to go in favor. So this is a special permit request for a reduction in parking. It's for 676 Dartmouth Street, also known as Assessors Map 133, Lot 241, filed under application PSP 25-3 on the portal. This, this was brought before us as an informal discussion, but just to get the board up on track. This is a apartment building known as Amelia Apartments. It was originally approved back in 2018 under a special permit for senior residential services. At the time of the, of the approval, 115 spaces were proposed, 110 being required. The building get an occupancy permit for that existing use back in December 30th of 2019. So this has been operating under this parking configuration for coming up on six years. As it's constructed, the parking facility as of today has 89 standard spaces and two handicap spaces. For this size parking facility to meet the number of accessible parking spaces, they actually need four. Those are shown on plans before you. They are also showing 18 proposed go spaces that would get you up to the 110 needed. So under Section 375, 24.3 B2A, this is something that could be given as a special permit for the parking spaces. Could be built on site, but the proposed use is such that it can be demonstrated that the full number is not needed. Case in point, being in six years and they haven't needed additional parking spaces. Two things that I would just like the applicant to speak on. There was a comment from the DPW that had not been addressed on the revised plans from, from Paul Duarte at the DPW. So just asked that the applicant speak on that. And one thing that the board had mentioned during the informal discussion were the go spaces in the rear of the parking lot. So I would just like the applicant to give some clarification on those. So I think at this time be appropriate to ask the applicant or his representative to give the board a summary of what's going on currently, and then I can answer any questions after that.
Thank you.
Okay, who's, who is the, who's representing the applicant?
So, Miss, Miss Member Sweet, this is Michael McVay from Marketing Walsh. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. For the record, Mike McVay, Marketing Walsh. I'm here with Christian Farland, engineer. I think I'm also here with Mr. Ned Carney from the owner and the applicant. And thank you, Mr. Giosa, that was a great summary. Thanks for the opportunity. Four weeks ago, we, Christian presented, I think informally, the plan. And you were kind enough to hear it out and to offer some comments. And over the last four weeks through Ross and Mr. Giosa, we've, we've responded and uploaded revised site plans. And like Mr. Giosa said, you know, this, this location, it's been pretty widely observed that it's just not necessary to have the full complement of required parking. And I was actually looking through the meeting minutes from February of this board, and it was, there was a, there was a comment made by the manager saying that, you know, routinely 40 spots in the parking lot go unused. And that was in relation to an application for the same developer in a different apartment complex. So I think Christian can speak to the, to the comments from, from Mr. Duarte.
Good evening, Madam Chair. For the record, Christian Farland, Principal Engineer and President of Farland Corp. Do you want to share the screen mic and put up the site plan?
Just forgive me a moment.
Sure. So we were, we were the original engineer on this project. And we've done several projects with Clermont companies. And they are, I can honestly say they are one of the, one of the better developers that we do work for. They don't, they don't skip out on anything, anything that's needed. They get it done. And, you know, as far as the landscaping goes, specifically this project and, and any other project, the landscaping is above and beyond what's actually required. This project, as Dan said, it's been built now for six years. And I drive by this project quite often. And you'll see that the parking spaces, the majority of them out front are vacant, not only for this site, but the Walgreens development as well. So we're here tonight seeking, you know, relief for the ghost parking, which we have provided on the plan, seven spaces on the, if you're looking at the building from the street on the left, we provided ghost parking, which meets the town's requirements of 10 by, 10 feet by 20 feet. We have four more spaces to the, on the right side of the building in the front. And then we added the seven additional parking spaces in the rear of the site. Certainly, you know, we know, we understand that these are, you know, further away than the, than the main entrance. But they do meet the town requirements with, with 10 foot by 20 foot parking spaces, 20 foot access drive and two-way traffic with its own separate entrance coming into that parking lot. If it ever needed to be built, I don't ever see that happening. This is a deeded 55 and over development. Majority of the, the parking is actually in the, in the garage itself. That's where 90% of the residents there do park. So certainly, we feel the, the town could definitely grant this request. I think it would be a burden to the developer and it would be, you know, a negative impact to the site having to pave an additional 18 parking spaces to create impervious area where it's not needed. And it would take away from the landscaping of the site. For those that were on the board when we did develop this, I'm sure you remember the Gifford Marine site that was there. This is certainly a significant improvement to what was, what was there before. And we feel, you know, we're going to add these additional two parking, ADA parking spaces, which is going to add more value to the property and it help comply with the ADA requirements. We did, we did add those spaces in front. So that is the only thing that's actually proposed to change. Everything else would be ghost parking spaces, which we feel will never needed, will be needed to be built. We did, I did see Paul's comments, the DPW's comments in regards to the sewer pump lift station that we have for this site. That is in the grass area, so that, that won't be affected at all by, by this, these two ADA parking spaces that we're proposing here. We did add a few details too as well, so we could get this, hopefully get this constructed as soon as possible. And the applicant can go finalize his refinance of this property to utilize for future projects in the town of Dartmouth. That's really all we have. I did provide, just so the board knows, I did provide Dan with emails that I did personally myself with Christine, who was the acting town planner in Dartmouth at the time, and with Tim Barber with DPW. We did provide this revised layout to the town. And we did, I physically went in and had meetings with Christine and, and Tim, met in person. And they had no problems with the revised plans. I guess I just don't know what happened and never got formalized. Or Christine, I don't want to blame her, but it just never went to the board, I guess, to, to get the board's blessing on it. But I just wanted to let you know that we did, this isn't like the first time. We just, Clermont just didn't decide not to build these parking spaces. It was agreed upon through the town that they weren't, that we provided that they weren't needed. And six years later, we, it's true that they actually, they're not needed. So I just wanted to make that, make sure that's part of the record. But other than that, I'll be glad to address any questions the board members may have.
Do anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Does, this is just something that fell through the loop, I'm afraid. And this is to correct something that fell through the loop?
Yeah.
I drove.
Go ahead. I drove, I drive through this area constantly. And I'm going to tell you, if I could do away with some of the parking in front, I would, because it's never used. It's really never utilized. So you have more than enough parking.
Can I make a comment, Madam Chair?
And Mr. Carney? Yes, go ahead.
Ned Carney, representing Clermont. Just to respond to that, we, we do have our residents register their vehicles. And I think Mr. McVay touched on this in his opening comments. But today we have 65 registered vehicles for a 55-unit building. I think we have one vacant unit. So just, just to put into context, you're right, we are overparked today. Overparking spots, we, we have, you know, more than enough parking spots to accompany the tenants of the building today. 65 registered vehicles. I think we have 93 spots.
And you have what, 80 inside, right, if I remember correctly?
55 in the building and the remainder surface parking. So it's one-to-one. Every tenant in the building gets an interior spot.
Madam Chair, if I could just speak on one thing?
Go, yes.
So Mr. Farland, the comment I was referring to from Paul was the location of the existing hydrants and water lines are not shown on the revised plans dated 10/27/25. That was the comment that hadn't been addressed. I don't know if there was an issue with hydrants out there that he was concerned about for where the parking spots are going. Did you not see that comment?
Yeah, fortunately, I must have missed that one, Dan. But I do know there's no, where we're putting these ADA parking spaces, there's definitely no water there. No hydrants, at least anyway.
The hydrants are on the other, the other side of the building, because I've, I saw them and I was curious how you were going to put a parking space there.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, he just made that comment. I just want to make sure that's, that's included for the record. I don't know if you have that information, if it could just be a condition of, if the board chooses, it could just be a condition of approval to get that thrown on the plan, just for clarification.
Yeah, that would be no problem.
Any other comments from anyone on the board?
No, I agree. I, I agree. They have enough parking there.
Any comments from anyone in the audience?
Hello? Can, can, can you hear me?
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is. Yes, that's my nickname, actually. Sorry. I, I just, I, I came late into the meeting. I just clicked in about a minute ago because the notice I received to join the meeting, the meeting ID number in the passcode was incorrect. So I actually went, I was scrambling on the website, on the town's website, trying to find out what was happening. And that's when I realized on today's agenda, that's when I found the correct joining meeting in ID. So I don't know what the confusion was as far as being sent out the wrong meeting ID and passcode. I missed, what are they trying to do across the street? If you could give me a quick review of what, what they're trying to do, please.
Are we talking about the, the development on Dartmouth Street? I'm assuming that's where you're talking about?
676 Dartmouth Street.
Okay, fine. They're just putting in what we call go space. They are required to have a certain amount of parking for the amount of the building. And we, as planning board members, have the ability to say, you're never going to use that amount, but you have to show on the plan that you're able to build that amount. And that's what they're doing. They're showing that they have the ability to build that amount of parking.
Okay, because like, there's, like, right now, you're saying, I heard somebody say that there isn't much parking being used. But they, they do have a lot of summer residents that winds up taking up space. And we get, wind up getting overflow parking between the post office and the schooling as far as, because people do use their law illegally in a sense. But we wind up getting jammed on our side streets here, because I live directly across at 675. And they, 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 people just parked alongside from the post office and, and whatnot. And it gets really jammed, so I didn't want to have them lose parking spaces that could be used.
I'm happy to reply to that comment, Madam Chair, if you'd like me to, as the building owner and manager.
Yes, please.
We do post regularly. There's fixed postings in the parking lot about the property is only to be used by Amelia residents and their guests. We enforce it as well. We have had several talks with the post office about their employees parking there, but we just don't feel it's appropriate for them to use it right now. And so from a management standpoint, we, we've never had an issue with overcrowding or a full parking lot. And parking across the street has, has never been brought to us before as an issue.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
I'm sorry. He, he is, he is correct. Mr. Carney is correct. It is his lot and it is his property. And people do use it. They go to the post office. And the post office employees tend to, were for quite some time parking there, to which they left notices to the employees about if they wanted to park there, they could pay for parking. And it's, it's a business. I understand that. But, you know, it's an overflow issue because people don't use that parking spot, you know? And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we weren't taking out what could be potentially used.
As a point of clarification, Joe, and I think you said your, your last name was Butter?
No, Maderas. Yeah, that's my nickname.
We're not, we're not talking about reducing the parking.
Okay.
We're just classifying the, the parking spots that were counted. They're not losing them. They're, they're just identifying them that if they're needed, then these spots are still available to be built. But in the interest of reducing the amount of impervious surface, the planning board has the ability to, 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 to approve ghost parking, which, which means basically just, it's better for the environment to have less parking space as long as it's, of course, not needed. And that's, that's why we approve the, the ghost parking, satisfies the minimum requirements, and it's also more kind to the environment. So no, no spots are being lost technically.
Okay, I get that. I understand that. I understand that. Okay.
Any other comments from anyone? Planning board? Residents? Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
Well, Madam Chair, we'd have to close the public hearing first.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The wishes of the board to close the public hearing and resume our regular planning board meeting.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote. Kevin?
Margaret first.
Okay, well, I didn't make any difference of which order. Margaret?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Lori Miller, yes. We are now into our regular meeting. I need a motion from someone on what they would like to do.
Motion to approve as requested and with the addition of administrative approval from Mr. Giosa to see, to make, to ensure that the, the water diagram is added. Dan, does that cover you?
Yes, just, DPW just wanted to see the hydrant locations in the water line, just to make sure there wasn't a conflict.
Got it.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Lori Ann Miller, yes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mederos, it's, you know, we've, we've gone through the, the motions already, but you might want to reach out if, to, to the building administration if you do find that overflow parking does become an issue for your street.
No, I, 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 I understand, but like, I don't know, gentleman's still on. Like I said, it's their property and I respect that. You know, they've paid it, they've developed it, they play to plow it and whatnot. But it's, it's technically illegally used because people go to the post office and they park in that parking area. The employees tend to try to park in that parking area. Because it's, you know, when it was the old property owner of Gifford Marine, it was generally, you know, a free-for-all. But they've enforced it, causing, you know, and they, like he said, they're very, they're very good with enforcement and leaving notification. They go to the post office next door and warn the manager saying, hey, get your employees' cars out here. I'm going to have them towed in an hour, which I understand and respect, like I said. But what winds up happening is because of that aspect, the, the, you know, people that go to the post office, especially coming up with the holidays and overflow with the school, you know, with parent pickup or functions at the mall or school, people wind up parking on the side streets, you know? I have a driveway. Sometimes it's hard to back up a trailer. You know, my trailer, I got a 7x12 trailer into my backyard because of the, the narrowing of the street, because of the double parking. You know, that's, you know, in, in reaching out to them because, hey, you know, they're overflowing. You're kicking them out. They're coming onto my property. It's really not, you know, not on my property, onto my street. It's really not, you know, their fault per se.
Right.
I'm happy to talk to Mr. Mederos offline. I know this isn't the forum for it, but to get together with him, I don't know what the proper way to share informa, contact information is here, but I'm happy, Mr. Mederos, to meet with you and go over the situation.
Yep, not a problem. Like, like I said, I mean, it's like, it's, it's not a ill neighbor type of thing, because I know you, you guys built it. It's yours, you know? And you have every right to, to whoever you need to put on there, you know? And people that want to pay, they don't want to pay, you know, and I understand that.
Mr. Mederos, if you can leave your name with the manager of the building, her name's Suzanne. I'm happy to get your number and I'll give you a call when she has it. I'm happy to call you and discuss this situation.
Not a problem. We can do that. We'll do.
Thanks so much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is a continued public hearing for the definitive subdivision of Linda Estates, PDSP-25-1, Zero White Oak Run, Assessors Map 31, Lot 16-4. I need a motion to continue, to go into the public hearing.
Moved.
Second, second.
Motion was moved by Kevin Estes and seconded by, seconded by Margaret Sweet. Kevin Estes? Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Lori Miller, yes. I need a motion. Dan, do we, we have a letter that needs to be read into the record, please? Dan, did I lose you?
Sorry. So happens you have to sneeze. Sorry about that. Just, just for the, for the record, this isn't a special permit, so Mr. Mello won't be voting on this one.
Okay.
This, this will just be continued. For, yes, we did receive a letter from the applicant representative, Zenith. It's State Chairman Psychopatis. We respectfully, we, excuse me. We respectfully request a continuance from our scheduled meeting with the planning board on November 3rd, 2025, to the meeting on November 17th, 2025. And that's signed sincerely for Zenith Consulting Engineers, Jamie Bissonnet, PE, Manager and Senior Engineer. They are just a little, I spoke with the engineer, just a little background on it. They're working on doing some additional drainage calculations in detail on that. They did not have that ready to be able to be viewed by the people that needed to view it, the staffs on different departments, so that's why they are requesting that continuation.
So I need a motion from the board to continue this to November 17th, 2025.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Second.
I have a motion made by Margaret Sweet, seconded by Kevin Estes. Kevin Estes, Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Ann Miller, yes. Motion carries. Okay, number three on the agenda is an application for Planning Board Special Permit, PSP-25-2, 813 State Road, Assessors Map 163, Lot 63. I need a motion to go into my special permit.
Moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Kevin Estes and seconded by Margaret Sweet. All in, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello does vote on this one? Kevin?
Yes.
Lori Ann Miller, yes. I have a letter here, so Dan, could you read the letter into the bracket, please?
Yeah, again, this is from Zenith Consulting Engineers. They're the applicant's representative. Chairman Psychopatis, we respectfully request a continuance from our scheduled meeting with the planning board on November 3rd, 2025, to the meeting on November 17th, 2025. And again, this was signed sincerely from Zenith Consulting Engineers, Jamie Bissonnet, PE, Manager, Senior Engineer. They're still working on a few things, if you recall from last meeting. They have a few outstanding items. This is why it needed to be continued. They're also probably going to be looking for a stretch to a deadline, deadline extension that we'll probably be looking to receive for the next meeting. But based on the information they have, I think it's appropriate to request this continuance.
Okay, so I need a motion to continue this public, this is a public hearing to November 17th, 2025, and to resume our regular planning board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Margaret Sweet, seconded by Kevin Estes. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
And Lori Ann Miller, yes. Motion carries, and we're back into our regular meeting.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thanks, Kevin.
Bye, Kevin.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Kev.
Good seeing everyone. See you next time.
Good night. Madam Chair. Good night. Um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
With your permission, I'm gonna leave because I'm not feeling well with.
Yes, no problem. Please feel better.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Feel better.
Um, can you just hold on one second?
Yes.
I'm just, I'm just concerned now because Helio didn't come. So, all right, so who do we have? We have Margaret and Kevin. That's all we have right now. So we won't have a quorum.
We won't have a quorum.
Um, so we can either table the rest of the items for discussion till the next, oh, Helio just came on, I think.
Helio, where you on?
Helio.
How are you, Helio?
He saved you.
I'm sorry, life, uh, life gets in the way sometimes.
Oh, I hear you.
Your timing is perfect, though. Margaret, you're off the hook.
Bye, Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret. Thanks for battling.
Okay, bye bye.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is a discussion of the special permit rules and regulations we received in our packet. Um, the red, blue, write up?
Yeah, just.
Red is planning board, right?
Yes.
I mean, red is planning board, blue is um town council?
Yes, so just a little back um backstory. So Ross and I, the red markups were things that we had looked at, just looking at it from procedural standpoint, as a lot of the information was preportal applications. Um, when we sent it to town council, they had not reviewed these current iteration of rules and regulation, uh, rules and procedures. Um, so it was a good time for him to do a deep dive throughout the whole um document. So that's what we have in blue with his comments. Um, so basically wanted to get this out to the board. Hopefully, if you have time, any questions? Um, we could try to get answers for you, or if everybody's good, and we can um hopefully put on the next um meeting to, to get them adopted.
Does anyone have any questions as to anything in red? Let's do it that way first. Red was done by.
The red, the red, the board, oh, excuse me, Madam Chair. The red had already been submitted to the board a couple of months back.
Okay, so anybody have any questions about all of this blue?
There you go.
I mean, I have some questions, but I, I'm gonna hold off on them because I want to do a little bit of research on a couple of the questions. But does anybody have, anybody else have any questions? Are they ready to have um Dan, remove all these reds and blues and adds whatever we need to add so that they can be on our next meeting so that we can vote on them? Or do you need more time?
Madam Chair, this is Helio. I, I did not have any objections.
Since we're, we're talking about our thoughts on uh changing these, we're, we're proposing changes to these. Uh, do you know if Margaret and uh our chairman have, have uh expressed any opinion on uh their review?
I have not received any comment yet, so it might be appropriate to give it one more meeting to discuss.
I, I would feel better since two of the, the five are, are not here, particularly our chairman.
Um, I, I would, I would put it out there to the board members. If you do have any questions, you can just email me directly and I could try to get answers before, beforehand. Um, as long as email is just one to one, then we won't have any open meeting law violations. And then I can try to speed up the process a little bit. But yeah, I think until we can have everybody on the board have a chance to review it, I think that would probably be the appropriate path.
Dan, is there a particular timeline?
No.
Uh, no, no, this isn't a town meeting. This is strictly for the board to vote. This is just um kind of a guideline, rules and procedures. So it's just, it's just for the board to vote on. Um, basically, once the board votes on it, I, I register with a town clerk. Takes ten days just to make sure there's no appeals or anything, and then it's, it'll be good to go.
Right. Originally, I thought this was something we had to um do as this, as a public hearing, but we don't. It's not, there's a subdivision rules and regs we have to. So this is just something that we vote on, and we can change whenever we feel there's something that's not working properly. Um, but I agree. I, I would probably say with the holidays coming up and people being away and everything, probably to do the final vote, probably the beginning of January. Does that sound right, Dan?
Uh, we, I mean, we might, we might be able to get it in December. I wouldn't um
Okay.
Specifically hold out. If it works out that way, then that's the way it works out, but uh ju- just, well, I'll talk about it later for the, the other, I'll talk about something else different later when we get to the.
So if everyone could just um read these and assimilate what we're taking out and what we're adding, it would be great. And then we can discuss them at another meeting. Okay, so now we're gonna go down to number two under administrative items, ongoing discussions, Dartmouth future zoning.
Um, again, this is an item we have on here that we've kept on. Um, just if anything comes up for board members to discuss prior to our workshop in December. Being as we only have three of the members, it would probably be appropriate to hold off on this item as well.
No problem. Um, minutes of the meeting of Oc- October twentieth, twenty twenty five. Does anybody have any comments, corrections, or additions? Hearing none. I need a motion to approve the minutes of October twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion was made by Kevin Estes and seconded by Helio. All, um, Kevin?
Yes.
Helio?
Yes.
And Lori Miller, yes. The minutes are approved. Uh, number four, correspondence. We need a motion to acknowledge and file.
Moved.
Second.
Motion was made by um Kevin Estes and Helio. I don't have your last name in front of me. What is it, please? Embarrassing. Rosa, thank you. I knew it, but I just couldn't remember it. Thank you. Um, made by uh Helia Rosa?
Yes.
And Lori Ann Miller, motion carries to acknowledge and file correspondence. For your information, Dan?
Okay, so no new zoning board applications and no new decisions on that. Um, I don't know if you have anything, if you want to go in order. I don't know if anybody's got anything on subcommittee reports?
No.
Okay, we just keep on going down.
Okay, um, so planners report a couple of things. Um, we have our housing production plan stakeholders meeting tomorrow. Um, so hopefully at that meeting, we'll start to get close to the finalization of that. So we're gonna discuss the goals and strategies that the board had as mu- as well as the other agencies that are involved in the process. Um, they'll, then Serped will then get into the plan writing and, and also kind of go over what the next steps will be for um adopting and approving that, and then ultimately certification. So um probably at the next meeting, I'll have some more information for the board at that point. I know the goal was to have this in by the end of the year. Um, so we can also use that information as we work on our um future zoning. So we have that going on. Um, one other thing, um, we had talked to, um, but site plan review was something I was hoping to ask the whole board, so um it's probably best that um we table that for a future meeting. Uh, we did have town council review that. Um, there was kind of a thought process going forward that might alter how we, how we have the site plan review bylaws set up. So um, again, I think it'd probably be appropriate to hold off on that discussion until everybody on the boards here. And then um staff and town council can um process to the next step. Um, one thing I did want to mention, um, talking about meetings for January already, it's probably about that time we start looking at the calendar for, for meetings for next year. Um, so that's something that I would like to, to add to the agenda for next week. We can start getting together where the holidays fall and all that good stuff. Um, and we can start discussing a, a plan for a meeting dates for the um twenty twenty six calendar year. So just as something to, to keep in mind for the next one. Um, and that's all.
That is a definite item on the next agenda, so everyone can look at it.
Awesome.
Is that the way everybody will be thinking about it?
Yes. Um, Ross and I have started kind of go through and see where the holidays fall and the weird non-Monday holidays to make sure we don't miss any of those. Um, and then we can start getting that together to see how it all starts to fall into place. Um, master plan implementation report. Basically, what we're looking at now is our zoning to, to, to um comply with the master plan um guidelines. So nothing new on that front, and um leaving on to the chairman's report.
There is no report. No.
Perfect. So I guess we're at number six.
Good, yeah. Anything from anybody else before we go to adjourn? I need a motion for, on this board to adjourn this evening, and our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, November seventeenth, twenty twenty five, at seven o'clock. And do I have a motion?
Madam?
Yes.
This Joseph had asked, can we look into why uh and how I had received a letter from, uh, from the planning board on Octo- dated October seventh, but with complete wrong media ID and passcode for today's meeting?
Sure.
I, I don't understand it. Like, I was trying to log in and I missed that whole front portion of it, that's why.
That will definitely be looked into. Um, I know that the me- the numbers that I received are correct. So I'm not sure what happened, but we'll definitely look into that cuz that's not something we want to happen.
Yeah, would you like me to swing by and drop that off at your office, or?
Uh, we should, we should have it on our files, so it'll just be a matter of, um, we, we get those numbers from DCTV, so I don't know if there was a mix up in, in a number internally, so we will definitely take a look into that.
Cuz when I was trying to get on, it was telling me that um on, you know, on the website, it was telling me that the, this meeting is scheduled for October sixth. Waiting, you know, there was another meeting in session, and it was just like giving me a whole, for ten minutes, I was just on that hold pattern. And therefore, that's when I went to the, to the web- town's website and went into your department, and I found your agenda online, and that's when I realized I found the new meeting ID number and the passcode to be able to join the meeting, and that's when I joined it so late. And I apologize for that, but it was beyond my control on error.
No, de- de- definitely not your issue.
And if I may, this is DCTV here. What it sounds like to me is it may have just been an old link that was copy pasted.
Right.
Just an instance of that. But yeah, certainly, Dan, if you want to link with us and um, we can figure out what happened there.
Yes, agreed.
All right.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and all your effort you do for the town.
Thank you, Mr. Mederos.
Thank you.
So I need a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
I have a motion by um Kevin Estes to adjourn and Helia Rosa to uh seconded. So all in favor, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Uh, Helia Rosa?
Yes.
Lori Ann Miller, yes. Motion carries. So our meeting this evening is ended, and good evening to everyone.
Thank you.
Excellent job, Mrs. Chairman.
Oh, thank you.